Hafedeh Tolu Hamzu, thank you for your participation in today's virtual informational briefing hearing. This virtual informational briefing hearing is convened by the Committee on Heritage and the Arts, Parks, Guam Products, Hagatnia Revitalization, Self-Determination, and Regional Affairs. The committee previously held a Department of Parks and Recreation Oversight Hearing on August 9th, 2020 to go over concerns on the public pool statuses. Today's virtual informational briefing will be on the status, management, maintenance, and operations of the Vicente A. Limtiaco Memorial Cemetery, more commonly known as Tigwak. We will also briefly go over the status of the Hagatnia U.S. Naval Cemetery, which will be a part of discussions with the governor's appointed acting director, Mr. Roki Alcantara of the Department of Parks and Recreation. Tomorrow afternoon, we will be convening Mr. Alcantara's confirmation hearing. The committee welcomes the direction and stability brought forward by the governor's appointment of Mr. Alcantara to lead DPR. Indeed, I mentioned that every time I talk with him, he gives me a whole list of things that he is tackling on behalf of us all for DPR. For the record, in accordance with the open government law, public hearing notices were given to all senators, stakeholders, and all main media broadcasting outlets with the first notice issued on Tuesday, September 29th, 2020, and the second notice on Tuesday, October 6th, 2020. Today's virtual informational briefing hearing notice was also posted on the legislature's website at www.guamlegislature.org. The time is now 5:37 PM. This virtual informational briefing hearing is now called to order. Seduas Massey for your virtual attendance to this afternoon, or I should say evenings, virtual hearing. The committee will focus on today's informational briefing hearing discussions on the status of the two cemeteries managed by the Department of Parks and Recreation. Yes, so joining me today, and I'm glad you were able to get in. It's been quite an internet day for a whole lot of us. We have minority leader Senator Telo Taitaguee Seduas Massey for being able to make this hearing. And the Department of Parks and Recreation is responsible for maintaining and managing the Vicente A. Limtiaco Memorial Cemetery, also known as Tigwak Cemetery, and the Hagatnia U.S. Naval Cemetery, known more commonly as the Hagatnia U.S. Naval Cemetery. The U.S. Naval Cemetery has some overlap of responsibility with the Office of Veterans Affairs, which will be part of the discussions this afternoon. So we are hoping to have with us the Director of the Veterans Affairs of the Office of Veterans Affairs, Mr. Tim Uggan, and perhaps Mr. Victor Villagomez, the DPR Deputy Director, might be joining us as well. So thank you all so much for joining me. Before we open discussions from participants of this virtual informational briefing, I want to go over some housekeeping rules that establish the rules of conduct for tonight's virtual informational briefing. The conduct of this informational hearing shall be as follows. All participants must abide by rules of conduct and quality assurance standards, including broadcasting from a quiet room with little to no interruptions. The use of virtual backgrounds is not permitted. All participants must broadcast from a room with adequate lighting, specifically to ensure that a participant's face is not backlit but visible at all times. When speaking, please ensure that you are unmuted and that you are speaking clearly into your microphone. I will moderate this hearing by recognizing each participant prior to their speaking in the discussions. Before speaking, please clearly state your name and title for record-keeping purposes. Oral testimonies and discussion shall be kept to the substance of the issues on the agenda. The personal inference as to the character of a nominee, senator, or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in that person being removed from this virtual public hearing by the host. I ask that all participants keep their comments or testimony to within five minutes. We're a small group here. We have a little bit of flexibility if additional time is needed. So let me now move forward on this virtual informational briefing hearing. For discussion, this virtual informational briefing is oriented on the agenda made available at our Zoom chat and on the disseminated public notices. We will now begin discussions on the Vicente A. Limtiaco Memorial Cemetery. The namesake of the Vicente A. Limtiaco, a U.S. Navy veteran who passed away in 1984, was who the Tigwak Cemetery was renamed after. He was also the former commissioner of PD, which is today's equivalent of a mayor. I'm old enough, I think, to have been around at that time of commissioners. There are perhaps several thousand burials at the cemetery since its opening in 1972. The government of Guam owns the property consisting of 22.52, or basically 22 and a half acres, under the Department of Parks and Recreation. I am estimating that a little more than half of the site contains grave sites, while the other half remains undeveloped. So at this point in time, I'd like to invite Director, Acting Director, Mr. Alcantara to provide any brief comments or overview about the cemetery. I know he's been doing a little bit of research and quite a bit of hands-on work down there. If you would like to share anything, Acting Director?
Yes, good evening, Senator, and Senator Marsh Taitugue and Senator Telo Taitugue. Yeah, for informational, the Tigwak Cemetery, I contracted a private contractor to cut all the grass that was overgrown there, including trimming of the trees and everything there, and to clean around the park area. The park actually was given to Parks and Rec in 1999. It was previously maintained by DPW until 1999, when Parks and Rec took it over. The, there was no prior maintenance that was done there. The park was being maintained by Parks and Rec. The cemetery right now is probably got about five more years for burial. And then the engineer of Parks and Rec has already gone out to survey some of the areas that we can put a new cemetery. One of them was at Santa Rosa Gigo, and the other one was at Paget, right after Hawaiian Rock. The cemetery right now is, we have a permit for burial there. It's $500 for every burial. And so that's being issued by our office. And the funds actually are not maintained by us. All the funds that we get from permits and from the burial, it all goes to the general fund, and so nothing is kept here. I do have a contract that's still ongoing there for another two months. So that would take care of the two months that we're here, that will be before I issue RFP for the continuation of that maintenance of Tigwak.
Well, you provided some very good information. It really helps us get a clearer picture of what's going on there. And so it's interesting to find out that this used to be under the Department of Public Works, and both entities have changed quite a bit over the years. There has been some shift for DPW as well. I think it was merged with what is now another entity. But it used to have, from what I'm told, it used to have about 1,000 staff. Now it has about 200, but like I said, I think one other entity that used to be with it is now its own independent entity. And then same for the DPR is, it used to have 200 staff, and now you're down to, I know it's right around 40. Yeah, and so we're hoping, you know, we understand that we need to, and especially during this fiscal crisis, to keep everything as responsible as we can. But at the same time, we, you know, having four guys that are taking care of 74 parks and, in my guesstimate, about 10 acres of cemetery, it's responsible to make sure that you have the human power to actually get that done, to take care of parks for everybody to go out and exercise and relieve some of their stress and spend time with family and, you know, to provide that dignity for the cemetery. So we will definitely continue to work at figuring out what is possible. I know that there used to be some coordination with the Department of Corrections. Can you fill us in about how many people used to help at a time and where you're at with that?
Yes, usually they give us around 10 inmates to help us out in maintaining the parks. But because of the lockdown, we're not getting any help from them. We do have, we do get help from DPW on the rapid respond team that help us out cutting the parks. This past week, they were out there helping us at Epan, and they're together now with my crew at Epa. So yeah, the DPW is there to help us. So but as far as the correctional facility, we're still, you know, on lockdown. But we do have an agreement with them.
Right, and I would imagine you don't know, I mean, we're in PCOR 1 right now, so there is no indication or understanding when that might be able to be available again from DOC.
Yeah, we don't have any info on that one.
Yeah, and I mean, it's understandable. We want to keep them as safe as possible. Their, you know, their living quarters have very specific situations with it, but the loss of 10 to 15 people who can assist is a huge loss. So I'm glad that there is some assistance and ability from Department of Public Works to be assisting. So since it's just the two of us, I'll perhaps just go back and forth between us, minority leader, if you have a question at this point?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Hi, Roki, how are you, my friend?
Okay.
Thank you. Good to see you. And I'm sure there's so much, you know, that you're doing right now with very little, and I greatly appreciate it. Everybody on Guam does, but working hard. And I know you're a hard worker too, especially with that little emblem up there. Oh, yeah. Anyway, so, Roki, a while ago, with this particular, the Limtiaco Cemetery that we're talking about, I think it was at the beginning, you cleared some land there to allow for at least 500 more burials. Has that been done and already been cleared?
There's still some areas there that we need to get Public Works to clear it and in the backfill it. Like I said, we still have around, close to maybe one to two years left on the ones that were cleared, but then we need to get the other areas cleared out. And it's still government property, so, yeah.
And that's why you said it's-
That's on our next project, which is to clear it.
And that's what you meant by five years. This place has a, so you-
If we clear that, it's good.
It'll be five years.
For another five years, yes.
So right now, you were only, I guess it sounds like you were only able to clear half of that 500 parcels of property, and then later on to clear another one, right?
Yes, we're just gonna, you know, we're just waiting for when DPW could be available to do that project.
But you're not in any threat right now, right? I mean, it's not like there's nothing there, you're not in any threat right now.
No, ma'am.
That's good. Okay, that's good to hear. The second one is, so, Roki, now that, you know, I mean, this information on 1999, when it was released to DPR, I'm curious, you know that the funding of the $500 that it costs for the burial and any permits, are you seeking the ability to capture that funding and then putting it at Parks and Rec to help Parks and Rec? Are you looking at doing something like that with the board?
That would be helpful. That would be a help from, you know, and that has to go to a senator.
Yeah.
And just for information, because this is informational meeting, I have a financial report here from July to September of this year, and the total amount that was sent over to the general funds was about $43,650. That's a lot of money that you could have it here, and we can use it for, you know, for parks, maintenance, and whatever we can.
Absolutely.
For the three months.
Yeah, so that's a very, very small amount for three months, but in the event, Roki, that report, now you're under a board right now, right? Even under the cemetery would be under the board's purview, right? So you would put it to the board. So may I suggest that, you know, a resolution from the board requesting this, and then maybe the Madam Chair, I'd like to be a co-sponsor if you're looking at introducing something like this. It would be worth DPW's while, not only worth their while, but it's desperately needed. So I'd like to be a co-sponsor.
Yes, and, you know, we've been looking at this for quite a while. We have a bill, but then we were told that a bill wasn't necessary. And so we also have a letter, because when the money goes there, it should be going to the Special Recreation Fund. So we're going to be making sure that that is indeed happening and that it's not ending up just lost in the general pool or not making its way there. So, yes, if the bill is needed, I appreciate your attention to this and your support. And if it's as simple as, you know, following up the communication that we've been having already and giving that letter, or even a resolution to give it a little bit more additional strength. But it is something that needs to be squared away, and, yes, it's something we've definitely been working on, because DPR needs every penny it can get, for sure.
And if, I think, a resolution would be excellent at this point. You know, Roki, having something from the board, you know, realizing, having them thought, think out the process, to even prepare for any kind of rules and regs, because once this money is set aside in a special fund to follow the rules and regs, so to clean this up, yep, I think the board really needs to get on top of this. So I hope, I hope you can push that, Roki.
Okay, I will inform the board when we meet.
Madam Chair, there was something else, Roki, you mentioned, in two months, an RFP. You're looking at putting out an RFP in a couple months. Can you kind of explain what that RFP does and how much, and if it's like a renewal from something?
No, the renewal is for two additional months. That's for October and November, and then the new contract will be for one year.
And this contract for the-
Maintenance, yeah. Putting it together for the maintenance of this cemetery and some other parks that are in the central area.
How much would that, well, no, it's an RFP, so request for- What has it been done before? Have you hired a company outside with an RFP before?
Yes, we do have a, we do have a company right now that's doing a sales stadium and Chief Kapua Park, that we did go out with an RFP. And so we do have the process already.
So this RFP is strictly for the cemeteries, or no?
No, I'm including also Epa and Amatapan. Those are the big parks that we cannot, you know, maintain. So, and the cemetery is about, on average, about 30 acres there that we need to clear. Same as Epa.
Yeah.
That really is going to go out for a bit, because our guys cannot handle it. Seven, four guys cannot handle.
Yep, and some of, oh, if I can, some of, some of what we've been talking about as well is, you know, I know that there haven't been, the, it's not necessarily a complete set of files, and you've been doing your best to look through the files that are there. Have you been able to find any rules or regulations, any sorts of guidelines for the cemetery itself?
No, I, if the, you know, some of our historians here, I couldn't, they couldn't come up with any, anything, but we do have a policy though for the cemetery at, you know, Tigwak Cemetery. And we do, we do have that policy with, along with the forms that they fill out when they come here and get a permit. So we hand those out to the ones that are going to be up there with the family. And, you know, all of those items that we mentioned, you know, there's a lot of ground rules that they're supposed to abide with, but you know, how do we enforce that? I am having some of my guys go up there and remove some of those old canopies that are dilapidating, because they just left it there, and, you know. So that's right now in the works with my guys, you know. But as far as clearing, there are families now that are coming up there, you know, that are cleaning around their grave sites, because now they can identify where it's at. You know, before, I mean, you cannot even identify, you know, where they at, but after we cut all of the grass up there, they're all exposed now. All the grave sites are exposed. So every day, there's a lot of families that are coming, you know, that are going up there and cleaning. So, you know, that just to thank those families that are there to help us out.
Yes, and a lot of preparations, I think, getting ready for All Souls Day. And so I've been seeing that as well. I've been going up there on a regular basis, you know, just to follow up on the contract and see how that went with the cleaning and so forth. And like you said, they did a very good job cleaning in between some of the grave sites and family areas, which maybe hadn't been done in a while. And so, yeah, we can really see the difference, and it's good. And it's good that you, as the minority leader was asking about, to make sure that this is something that is continuing, so that you already have these plans in place and these contracts in place. So that's very good to hear, and I'm very glad that she was asking about that.
Okay, I'm just curious, I have a, how much are you paying right now for the maintenance of your current contractor right now?
The, well, it, with a monthly basis, you know, during the day, during the dry season, they cut twice a month. During the wet season, they cut three times a month. So they, they average around maybe 3,000 maybe a month for, yeah, for that one contract that they have. But, you know, like I said, if we go out for a bit, you know, there'll be different companies that will come in and give us proposal, you know. We'll see, but definitely we need to go out and get and outsource those parks that we cannot handle.
And if I may, Madam Chair, going back to the five years that we talked about the life span of the Limtiaco Cemetery, and you mentioned earlier in your comments that you were looking at, you know, other locations to open up another cemetery, okay, you did mention that. Are there certain guidelines? Because you can't just like, you know, build a house, you have a certain permits and stuff and build a house. I think cemeteries are going to require a whole lot more to comply by with regulations and requirements on a cemetery. Are there something, because five years really, so it goes by real quick. You know, like two years, Senator Taitugue is, it goes by really quick. Next thing you know, your eyes are blink, two years are gone. So, Roki, have you identified a location already? Have you started in the works, because it could take-
Yes, Telo, my engineer was working with the Department of Land Management to see where they can locate a new cemetery. And two of the locations that were identified was one at Santa Rosa Gigo and the other one at Paget, right after Hawaiian Rock. But that has to go to the land management and, you know, all the different entities that will provide permits and all that, and also has to go to, you know, Parks and Recreation or Sipul for any archaeological issue.
Right, Senator Marsh, archaeological findings, that's going to be a big one, especially in Paget area. And then I think there should be a public comment period too as well for the public to come forward, you know. I mean, some of them may not want a cemetery nearby where they live or anything like that. So I'm sure there's a SOP when going through that structure, right? And ahead of time is always better, you know.
Yes, and the location is finalized, it's just, you know, suggestion of, you know, of those locations.
Yeah, one of the things I'd be interested in- Yeah, one of the things I'd be interested in, and, and certainly I don't know the landscape of the pocket area completely. But I know that there are quarries up there and there are quarries for a reason. So um, as part of this study, have, have they done an analysis of like how deep the soil is? And um, its ease of, of being able to dig and bury? I, I assume that has to be.
It, it has to be part, it has to be, it has to be part of, of uh, you know, the. The ones that you need to uh address as far as uh, when you, when you build something. You, you need to get all those uh dockings in as far as permits and all that. So uh, that, uh, like I said, I have my uh engineer assigner working on that. And it, it's not finalized yet, but uh, it's just a, you know, a suggested area.
Right, and, and I know people have been looking up north for a while. And um, as the minority leader is saying, there are these uh considerations and it takes a lot of consideration. It's also over uh our freshwater lens area. And so, yeah, I'm sure that there will be a lot of uh consideration there, but it's good. This is what I'm saying, uh, you're very proactive. And so I've really appreciated that, that anytime we meet or we talk. Um, I'm, you know, I'm getting to hear about the many things that you're continuing to push forward. And that is absolutely what we need at DPR. Your mandate is very large, so I definitely appreciate all of that proactivity. Yes, um, let me see. Well, you know, on behalf of the community, uh, we, we really need this, so we definitely appreciate that. And it's good to hear about the partnerships so that um, DPW, um, these contracts. You know, that you're looking at how to make maintenance happen. And then we will also continue to look at what is building DPR and how we might do that. Up to a point where it's being responsible with the community's resources, that it has enough personnel to handle things in a responsible way. And as I mentioned with the, the dignity that it deserves. So I'm glad you're also already thinking of this long-term expansion or the capacity that's there. Um, and, and the minority leader was going in this direction, I believe. But um, at, at the right time, I think it's going to be important to look at the assessment of the fees. And just find out where we're at. You know, doesn't need that, anything needs to change right away or be implemented right away. But to do an assessment to understand where we're at with what it takes to bury somebody there. And, and whether it's covering that cost. Um, or if somewhere down the line, that fee structure needs to be examined. Do you have any understanding of where we're at with that?
I, I think the, the fee adjustments have to be addressed. I don't know when the last time the fees were, uh, you know, were uh changed. But it, it seems like it's been there for, for a long time. So yes, definitely the fees must be uh looked at. And you know, uh, right now, we, we, we're, we're actually good as far as uh burial at uh, at Tigua. I mean, you know, the uh, the uh MOA with uh Park, uh Parks and Rec and DPW uh is, is ongoing. They provide us with the uh backhoe. And so I have two guys up there that are, are doing the burial. And so that uh, you know, like I said, we, we, the uh five hundred dollars is, is just uh for the permit itself. And uh, the, the two guys, you know, they're, they're, they're getting paid through Parks and Rec. And then uh, the operators from DPW.
I have just a couple of questions and then um, if there are questions that the minority leader has as well. I think that there was some equipment upgrade associated with um conducting the burials. Was there any recent equipment that was purchased by DPR or that is slated to be, to be purchased? Maybe for lowering the bodies into the grave? Or is all of that equipment functional?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's uh, it's, it's all uh, uh. Manual right now, uh, as far as uh, you know, the uh, the, the burial sale. Uh, our equipment still uh, is still good, uh, we're, we're still using it. There is uh, no uh, no issue as, as far as the uh, the burial itself. They, you know, they're still being maintained. Uh, we average around two burials a day. Uh, and uh, every, every, every day of the week. So uh, uh, but we, we do assign uh permanent people up there, two, two permanent. Uh, and, and that's all they do is uh, to address the burial.
About two a day, and that gets me to the other point. Um, you know, there's, there's been a little bit of discussion about it, um, especially when the pandemic first. Uh, was uh declared as a state of emergency and, and things like this. But there is the situation where there are. Family members or loved ones or members of our community who are not claimed at the hospitals and, and the morgue. Um, can you go over that procedure with us a little bit? And, and if you see uh maybe any need for improving it or adapting it or changing it at all?
Can, can I, can I refer you to Amanda, she, she uh.
Oh, sure. If we can have Amanda, is she able to um turn her camera on?
Amanda, turn your camera on, uh, on mute.
There you guys are.
Hi.
Thanks for, thanks for staying late tonight, um, we really appreciate it. And then if you can start with your name, just so we can get it into the record.
Um, my name is Amanda Pengelina, I'm the admin aide here at DPR. And behind me is Lisa, she's our cashier. Lisa. So um, with the unclaimed bodies, there's a um, a vendor, I believe, who handles that. And um, he would come through us to process the burial.
So, um, he does, maybe if the director, cause I think I'm hearing uh both. From the director's office and your office, if maybe the director could mute himself?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you know, uh, director, do you know how to mute your, your uh computer? Okay, there we go. Um, yeah, so this, this vendor, uh, that person is responsible for arranging everything? And then DPR just handles the actual burials?
Yes, and then I believe we would um, request for payment from the public, from Department of Public Health.
Okay, so the Department of Public Health actually pays uh per burial? Is, is that how it goes?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And, and just for clarity of understanding, is it the full five hundred dollars for the burial? Or is there some sort of a, agreement?
It's a full five hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, if I may, ma'am chair, um, I was staying on that line, same line. Um, it, you said a vendor. Are these vendors um, you know, hired by a certain somebody? Or they're just, are they the funeral homes or is that what we're talking about, the basic arrangement?
Yeah.
Who are the vendors?
Sorry. Um, it, we, I've worked with one, it's Arimathea.
I'm sorry, say again?
Arimathea?
There, and, and this vendor uh goes to like Guam Memorial and, and then um, nobody claims the body. So that individual vendor will, will take the body. Um, I guess that means Guam Memorial Hospital is the one that calls on that vendor uh to come pick up the body. And then from, so that's another public health, that's probably Guam Memorial Hospital um, having to do with that. Then they come to you, um, and the five hundred is paid by public health. But do you pay the vendor anything or is the vendor just bringing the body from uh, the hospital?
The vendor is just bringing the body, so we make the arrangements and then.
Yeah. Ha- has any of these, uh, because of space, you know, Guam is, is growing and becomes a space. Is there any reason why um cremation is not being considered instead of burial?
Uh, I'm not too sure, but I know that there are times where they would put like a two and one or three and one.
I see, three and one or two and one. Um, and I, I suppose that cremation may be actually more expensive than the five hundred dollars to bury them anyways. I was just, you know, we're looking at space and everything and land and uh, you know, but it's really about the funding, so. Um, I see, thank you.
With the urn, it's also um, five, five hundred. If you're gonna bury an urn, it's five hundred as well.
Still five hundred, okay, but the space is smaller, right? You wouldn't be using the um, I.
I think it's the labor and the activity uh more so than, but that's a good question. Because um, private cemeteries operate differently, right? It's the size and location, um, a- and so you're right. Um, it, there are perhaps different principles that are coming up with this. Yeah, so that's a good, that's a good question.
I, I'm thinking about land because like, like uh, um, the director said. You know, we're, we're gonna be losing this, this particular area in five years. Um, we can't keep, you know, we've probably gone to its borders already. So we need to find ways to maybe if we, you know, build, I, I say this, but they call them condominiums. Cause some of my relatives are in what they call condominiums. And, and my uncle, my sister actually was cremated, it's a smaller space in the area that we put the urn in. Uh, but it, it's the cost of the cremation, I think that's an issue here uh more so than anything. But you just mentioned, regardless if it's an urn, it's still five hundred dollars and it still takes up the same space?
No, I think it's less space. Uh. I, it's a, it's less space, I believe it's just the size of the, the urn or the.
Okay, yeah, but, but, yeah, you, you got right into where I was interested in going as well. So we'll continue that line of questioning because uh Director Alcantara and I have talked about, or he has shared with me. Um, that you have considered the possibility of crypts there. Is that something your engineer is looking at? Are you still thinking uh, along those lines as a possibility?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, another possibility. Uh, you just have to get the uh, the information on how, how to build it. And uh, see how much it's gonna really cost if it's the, you know, uh. Efficient uh, financial uh, efficient, then you know, we'll, we'll, we'll have to work on it. But yeah, definitely, we're looking into those condominiums like uh, the senator says.
Yeah, yeah, um, because I mean, um, yeah, space is just a consideration and, and there's really uh no getting around that. And the private cemeteries uh are doing the same thing, so.
Um.
Oh, yes, is that Amanda again?
Okay, so in the event where um, they dig the hole, they usually find, sometimes they find big rocks.
Yep.
So, so they use that small space for the urns.
I see, so, so maybe the grave site is, is still the same dimension? But the urn is just gonna be in that one smaller spot, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, um, so I, I've, you and I had had a discussion and, and I said that I would go ahead and write a letter to the governor. Just so that, um, and I'm very pleased to hear that you have been as proactive as you have been. But that uh perhaps one of the federal grants could come in. And uh, really help assess and, and situate things. Um, assist with the, the surveying, the, the possibilities as to what is the best way to expand. But also getting into place uh rules and guidelines. So that everybody has a, an understanding of what the situation is there. I think right now, there's not a lot of clear understanding and it's caused a little bit of confusion. Um, with those policies that you mentioned earlier, do they let the families know what the size of the plot is? Because there is some, um, there is some construction that goes down there as, as people create. I, and I'm not sure if there's a particular term, but these little sort of structures uh there. It, it, are they given information like that so they understand the exact size of, of the burial? So that they know the dimensions that they can build? Uh, director?
Are you addressing that to, to me?
Yes, yes, uh, director.
Okay, we uh, the, as far as the burial uh, uh, that is consistent of all the, the burial site. Uh, the grounds that they're, they're uh, they're digging, is, is, you know, uh. Regardless if it's a, a child, which uh, we ran out of uh, of space with, with children. It is now buried with, along with the uh, adult uh area. So uh, the, the dimension of the graves are, are still the same. I think it's uh, yeah. Six feet, uh, yes.
Yeah, and, and so that's good to hear that there's that uniformity and that probably helps people understand better. But do they, do they have a, a sense of understanding how wide they can be building a structure or how long? Do you know?
Well, uh, you know, as far as the structure, they're really supposed to build structures there. But uh, you know, uh, the enforcement is not really uh being done. Uh, it, it seems like everybody there uh that has a burial site. Uh, follows the example of, of what is there. And you know, and if you go up there, they look like uh, you know, there's a really big uh. Permanent canopy that are over the grave. So uh, we actually got a policy here that doesn't really state, uh, we only, only say is not to build anything there. But uh, they turn around and, 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 and just keep building. I don't know if there was a policy ever made before, you know, since, I mean, like I said, since the time it was built. Uh, way back in the seventies. So uh, how do we enforce that? Uh, it, it's, it's very hard to enforce that, it's just a matter of giving them the, the guidelines and what they can't do. But you know, they, they go up there and they just, of course, take care of their, their grave site. And, and uh, make it look, make it look presentable, that's, that's what you're doing now.
Right, right, no, I know there's a lot of uh loving care that goes into that. And so um, in the long-term planning, yeah, it would be good for the board and um, and others to be figuring out. How, how, how this is gonna best work? Because, you know, yeah, clarity helps everybody and it helps. Because, you know, yeah, clarity helps everybody and it helps the families as well. And for the long-term of the care of their loved one as well. So with the board and you at the helm, I know that we'll continue to work at making progress on this so that we can get this clarity for the families and clarity for the DPR. Are there gates there? Is that something that might need to be put there? Are there gates?
There's no gate there. The cemetery is open because there's a road that the tenants of the, you know, Nimitz estate pass by. So there, we started to put up a wall, but it was only halfway down. And so if we're gonna put a gate, we might have, yeah, we might as well put the fence because it's very open, it's very open.
Yes, and you're right. I've wondered about that because the wall only goes so far and then people have created their own entryways after the wall stops. And so...
Yes, there's more, three or four entry.
Yeah.
From the main entrance.
And so I think, you know, this is on your radar. This is something that is important to the community for us to continue having you and the board look at this for the long-term. Getting it secured, maybe getting those roads leveled, getting guidelines into place and maybe the gates will help with some of the enforcement. Yeah, because people want their loved ones to be in a dignified area. And so as DPR continues to tackle this, they will need to be working towards those solutions to get this all in place. But I think it's off to a good start. You've gotten it cleared in ways that it maybe hasn't been clear for a long time. You've already got a maintenance plan in place where there's, there are people that will be maintaining it over the next few months and then it's gonna be going out for a contract. And then possibly, as I mentioned before, possibly working with the governor to see about perhaps a federal grant that could let you do things like finish that wall, put up proper gates that also have a little bit of dignity to them and aren't just functional. The signs there need to be replaced and things like that. So it could be a very good capital improvement sort of federal grant out of the Department of Interior or something, where we have a lot of discretion as a government to request those kinds of funds. So I think that would be a really good project. This is our only public cemetery, so it's not like we really have other ones to be having as options. Before I move on to the US Naval Cemetery, were there any other questions or comments that you had, Minority Leader?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Roki, I really liked how and what the good senator said, being proactive. I really appreciate that. And staying along that line, I'm hoping that maybe in the next month, you know, or a month or so, that you can provide us with a timeline, a timeline on the cemetery with, you know, the projects that you want to implement, especially the one for five years, you know, the timeline on how you wanna structure that to get to that point of five years. And definitely the timeline for the one that we currently have on what needs to be done and fixed. And I think in that timeline, please don't forget to incorporate the board to get that money out of the general fund to, you know, DPR, a timeline for that too, approaching them. So I think this timeline is gonna be very helpful and helpful for us too because we can see your timeline and we can think ahead too and be proactive on that timeline, knowing that you're gonna need legislation for this or knowing that when we go into budget hearings, that this is something that's very important. So that's the only thing I have, Madam Chair, just a timeline to be put in place. Okay, thank you.
Yes, and again, with that proactivity, Director Alcantara has hired a recreation manager. And so this is gonna be helpful because for a while there, it was basically you and the deputy director trying to fill all of the middle management that was also missing. And so we've got that step in the right direction with the recreation administrator. And then hopefully we can start moving on to the park administrator, which gives them certain responsibilities that they'll be able to be fulfilling and managing and setting up this framework. And that also frees you to be able to continue to do this sort of framework building of understanding the timelines and all of the other managerial sort of elements that need to happen, so. Okay, so with this, I think we've gone over some very good topics. Was there anything else that you want to mention, Acting Director, before we move on to the US Naval Cemetery that's down there in Hagatna?
Not right now. I guess we'll wait until the VA Cemetery comes in and then, you know, I have some comments on that also.
Okay, and, you know, we're hoping that he's gonna be able to make it in. He was committing to us that he was gonna be able to be here. But if not, this is something that we need to continue to discuss. There's a little bit of vagueness in whether they should be having some responsibility. And I guess one of the points I wanted to bring up as well before we completely move is that there are some veterans buried at Tiguan. And so, you know, and it's also just down the road, kind of that expression, a hop, skip and a jump away from the Veterans Cemetery. So, yeah, I think if you and he sit down, you'll have some very fruitful discussions about maybe how you can collaborate or the responsibilities could be shared a bit since there are veterans at Tiguan and there are definitely veterans at the Hagatna Naval Cemetery. But I believe, is this Mr. Everola, is this the engineer?
That's our engineer, ma'am.
Excellent. So just Masi for being able to make it, Mr. Everola. Is there anything that you wanted to share about Tiguan and maybe some of what you've been doing there in looking over the land before we move on?
Hello, good evening. I am Mr. Ariel Everola, the engineer of the Parson Rex. Pertaining to the Tiguan, the property is big, a used property. And our proposal is if they are closing already the Tiguan, we have some sort of in Santa Rosa and also in Pageant Point. But if you want to stay on Tiguan, we can do a crib wall along the side, along the perimeter of the pens. All the pens, rather than the put tinny pens, we're gonna put a crib wall so that they can put all those people inside the crib wall so that we can prolong the life of the Tiguan Cemetery. And also, the problem that we are facing over there is the abaco, we need abaco. Because the abaco is the problem. So that we can grade everything. Sometimes it rain. The problem there, we don't even have abaco because it become soaked the sun. It's very hard to travel over there. That is the problem, the one we are facing over there, Parson Rex.
Yeah, and both of those are good to hear. And certainly this is your field and not mine, but it makes me think, you know, we were talking before you got here about finishing off that wall because the wall is not finished, people make their own entrance. I can, you can see the tire tracks there. They drive over and just head on in. But if we're talking about the cribs as both you and the Acting Director have mentioned, this is maybe an opportunity to finish that wall and get the cribs up at the same time and provide a little bit more space there and give the ease of access as well.
Yeah, that's true because the main gate is not really closed because there is no gate and the other side is open. We are planning to close that one so that the entrance is only one gate so that the area will be secure for ventilation like that. But the problem, the one we are focusing for that one is the appropriation plan, the money because the Parson Rex will have the money.
Right, right. And, you know, we need to keep this on our radar as well, the need for a backhoe that is more stationary there so that it doesn't need to be, I guess, moving back and forth with DPW, I guess, is what it sounds like?
Yes, that's true.
Now, I was estimating, but not, you know, I don't really have any full basis for it. Do you have an estimate as to how much of that land has been used? It's about 22 acres in its entirety. Is there about 10 acres that have been used? Is it more? Is it less? Do you have an understanding?
Probably tomorrow I can give you the exact numbers of that one. I can check in my... Yeah, about maybe 16 acres already, so I did that.
Yeah, and so I think hearing numbers like that, it helps people understand what a large task this is. And it helps us all understand what needs to get put into place so that it can be done, you know, it can be maintained appropriately. So 16 acres is really quite large. It's a very large responsibility. Now that we have the engineer here for Minority Leader, did you have questions you wanted to ask?
No, I don't. Thank you, Ariel, for being here. Appreciate all the work you're doing there. And you had some good points on prolonging the life of the current cemetery. So I hear you have some good ideas, so I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Have you gotten to look at any of the sites in Poggit area or Santa Rosa area? Have you been looking at the sites?
In Poggit, we can make a land and also a crib wall on those area. I make a study for that one. I make the development plan, what's to be done. Everything is intact already. So it's only a matter of giving us the property because the land management, he give us the property, but it's not yet secure. Because the cemetery, the one they proposed before, is already taken by the other people. But they give us that area for cemetery. There is two locations, one in Santa Rosa and one in Pageant Point. But I developed the plan already and give all the guidelines that we need. Once they submitted that one, we can estimate that because I make the estimate already and the plan.
Very good. And how many acres are we talking about in those areas?
It's huge, huge area in Pageant Point, but the wood area...
So it's more than 22 acres?
More than that one, 100 acres.
Did you say 400?
100 acres for the property.
Is that, sorry, just to make sure I'm hearing you correctly, is that 100?
Yes, it's about 382 acres, but that's one, everything is clean, the one for the government. But we need only 100.
Okay, and 100 would be more than four times the size, I mean closer to five times the size of Tiguan. So if that one was opened up, it would last a good while. What I was asking earlier, and you've maybe looked at this, is what is the ground like up there? It's not too hard? I know there's a lot of quarrying, at least two quarries that are up there.
The quarry is very far from the Pageant Point. The other side, they are in the other side.
Okay.
We are in the residential side.
I see.
So it will compete for their interest for that one.
Okay, so, yeah, I guess the one thought would be, and I'm not saying whether it's a positive or negative, it's just that it's kind of remote out there. And so, you know, again, we'd have to have a really strong plan. It sounds like there's one in place, but with a really good wall, a really good gate, you know, ways of really controlling the activity there.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably we just only discuss to the military because there is electrical over there that they need to pass because the other side is military.
Okay, well, and that's one of the things I've thought about for some other elements is if there's the military adjacent to a government of Guam development, well, then they kind of share some of the watching over of the site with us because, yeah, they're there. Okay, so that's very good and thank you for all of that preparatory work that you've been doing and helping us, you know, as a community, figure out how we are gonna continue taking care of this situation. Now, with this, and this is probably getting too detailed, one of the things that has come across my mind as a concern is it seems to me that part of the issues at Tiguan and something we would want to maintain going forward, but also for another cemetery, if we expanded to another cemetery, is controlling the vegetation because I think that's one of the difficulties at Tiguan. There's been all kinds of either purposeful plantings or accidental plantings, you know, plantings that occurred on their own because of nature. And it just creates that much more of a challenge to bushcut around everything, big, small and otherwise. But even the grass, I mean, there's a lot of sword grass in the cemetery, so, yeah. I'd like to, just kind of in the big picture, continue to have us think about these things, about how we can be having vegetation that provides dignity but also allows for better ability to maintain.
Yeah, for me, and my idea is to provide the cemetery a walkway for everything. If there is a walkway for every crib wall on the ground, there is a walkway, there is no more grass. You can minimize the grass. You can only plant whatever, the viscous or whatever good plants for that one, a progress like that. It's not tangang tangan because sometimes you can see tangang tangan, a big trees over there. It will create a problem for those crib wall, the one is laying that, after that, it's sometimes it's like that. But if you, if we have money that we can use, we're gonna lessen our maintenance if we're gonna put sidewalk for every line of the crib wall.
Yeah, and so, you know, I appreciate that you're putting some thought into that because, you know, people want to express themselves, but they also want tidiness, ease of access, ability to have it be maintained, making sure that the burials stay level, all of those things. So it's important that that kind of forethought is going into it, so I appreciate that. Okay, so let's go ahead and move on to the Naval Cemetery. So there is a connection to the Guam Veterans Cemetery and the Hagatna US Naval Cemetery. Both cemeteries were simultaneously transferred to Guam's government with the intention that Guam will manage its state cemeteries and expand the existing Veterans Cemetery using federal funds. The Guam Veterans Cemetery is funded through the US Department of Veterans Affairs and it comprises 18 acres in total, so as vast as that... So as vast as that, as that looks down there, it's actually smaller than Tijuac in its, its entirety. Known as the U S Naval Cemetery Number One. The property was transferred to Guam in nineteen eighty-four to build and expand the cemetery. Using U S Veteran Administration's grant funding in two phases. And this is what we know today as the Guam, uh, Veteran Cemetery. Now, the old U S Naval Cemetery, often referred to as the U S Naval Cemetery Number Two. That one, we also call the Hagatnia U S Naval Cemetery. And it's located there along Marine Corps Drive. This was also transferred to the Guam government at the same time. So really, all of this is actually pretty new for the government in the big picture. Um, prior to that, um, all the cemeteries, they were either military operated, uh, church operated. And, and so forth. And the public cemeteries are this newer concept, really, only being around since the seventies and so forth. This U S Naval Cemetery, that's along Marine Corps Drive in East Agania. Or East Hagatnia, was first opened by the U S Naval Government in nineteen oh two. And actually is currently a part of the Hagatnia Heritage Walking Trail. It's the final stop, if you will. In two thousand and three, the Department of Parks and Recreation Adopt a Park Program formed a partnership. Between the U S Navy and Guam. And so later on, um, I have a feeling that that adopt a park isn't in place anymore. But it might be something, I mean, it's a good point. Uh, it makes sense that the U S Navy has some investment there. And it might be something to continue to pursue. The cemetery contains two hundred and fifty-four burials dating back to the Spanish-American War. World War One, World War Two, and the Korean War. The interment of its first occupant occurred in nineteen oh two and the latest one was in nineteen fifty-five. So maybe most people think that only U S service members are buried there. But there are a variety of, of people that are buried there. Uh, U S Army soldiers, seven German sailors from the World War One time. Uh, several German civilians, Tomorrow Service Members and Military Dependents, including many children. It actually, uh, several years ago was put on to the National Historic Register of. The National Register of Historic Places. So with Director Alcantara, um, is there any other information about the Hagatnia U S Naval Cemetery? That you would like to provide? You're on mute there, yeah.
Well, I, uh, I got together with, uh, the Director of, uh, Veterans Affairs. Uh, last week and we talked about the situation there. Uh, we were the ones that were, were maintaining the cemetery. But, uh, now that he's, uh, is aware that the cemetery now belongs to the VA. He's gonna take over, uh, the maintenance of that, uh, of the cemetery. So, uh, we've already, uh, agreed upon what, uh, what, uh, our duties are. And so he's, he's gonna take over the cemetery.
Excellent, that's very good news. Um, I, I know, knew that you were working in that direction. So again, that proactivity, um, has, has laid that understanding down. And it's very beneficial, really, because they can apply for federal monies. And especially it's a national historic site. So with those combinations, they may be able to apply for monies if they feel they need to for that area. So that proactivity is, uh, good news for us. Uh, they will be including that in their maintenance, it sounds like. And, um, like I said, they have the ability to actually secure federal funds if they feel that they're needed for that site. So very good. Um, I guess there is no adopt a park that's, that's needed at that point, then you, you, you've got that in place. So with that, um, do you know? Because it is part of that historic trail and just as a site in its own right. Is there any interpretive signage that's there?
Uh, there is, um, used to be a sign there. But, uh, I think, uh, you know, the VA needs to, uh, to put a sign there now. Because that it, it now belongs to them. But before it was just, uh, you know, Parks and Rec, so, you know, we, it, it, there was no sign at all. If I'm not mistaken, uh, I don't know the, the, if Ariel has something to say about that, you know, because he's been, been around. Uh, he's the engineer and, uh, maybe he, he might say, yes, there's, there's a sign there, so. Ariel.
Yeah, do you know, uh, do you know, Ariel? If there's any signage that's there at the East Agania U S Navy Naval Cemetery?
Ariel. On mute.
You're, you're on mute.
The Veteran Cemetery, I'm the one who built that one in nineteen ninety-nine. One, when I was in the public works. So the idea, the one they make in the veteran cemetery, they gonna put everything over there, even in Agania. Those people are in Agania, they will transport to the veteran cemetery. But there is an element about the bones, uh, like this, like this, they don't want to touch it. So they leave it over there. That's why it become, uh, the government, uh, maintaining the veteran cemetery. We are, after the, the one in Agania. And the one in the veteran cemetery, they in the one over there. The, uh, the upway of the third property is belongs to us. After that, the, the people, uh, we are the ones maintaining it. But as of now, they took it because the veteran cemetery, because of the money problem before. They said, okay, we're gonna do it the maintenance. No moment because the government is a little bit broke on that time. They said they cannot maintain the whole area of the veteran cemetery. So that's why they bring back to the veterans appear for that.
Okay, very, very good.
Done. Already, uh, clip wall on this area. Because the creep wall is already finished and no more, uh, space for the creep wall. After that, they said, okay, we're gonna do something to partner about the, what's to be done. I don't know if they have money already for that one, the one they are seeing to us.
Okay, yeah, and, and, uh, like I said, with it both being, um. Having, having a, a variety of military history there and it being a national historic site. Um, if they wanna pursue signage, there's a, a good amount of history that they could really share. Um, there may even be some people from Papua New Guinea. Uh, maybe not, they're, maybe they're not buried there. I'm not, I'm not quite sure. But, um, yeah, it, it has a very, very interesting history. Um, the U S is, is where the, excuse me. Guam is where the U S, uh, had its first shot with the Germans in World War One. So, yeah, it's, it's got some interesting, uh, connections there for history. Um. For minority leader, do you have any questions about the U S Naval Cemetery?
Well, uh, that's, that's one of the reasons why I, I wanted to be here tonight. Because I was wondering, how is Parks and Rec taking care of a military cemetery? You know, all the funding that you receive, I, unless you, you get a grant from, you know, federal funds to help you. I can understand, but now you cleared it up, uh, Mr. Alcantara, Seduus Mossi, and I'm, Tim's a good man. So I'm sure you're gonna buy him a lunch or dinner for taking over that, uh. Taking over that responsibility, uh, greatly appreciated. And, and you know, your love, Madam Chair, for, for the history of that is, um, well noted. And, and I, I, I'm so glad I was here because I got a wealth of, uh, knowledge, uh, passing by that cemetery. I'll have a different perspective every time I pass by there, the history in that. And that's something I think we should preserve as well. So I greatly appreciate it. Um, Ariel, I, I, you were breaking up in and out, but, um, you mentioned something. You, you know that cemetery very well, the Naval Cemetery. You mentioned something that you helped build something. I, I, you were breaking up. Can you repeat that again? Did you say something about building something?
No, the Veteran Cemetery is almost, uh, the creep wall, the one they got. It's already pulled, getting pulled already. That's why I'm telling to them, they should build another room. They can do it back to back on the creep wall because there is already wall so that they can save money. I said to them, uh, you find out how much money we're gonna get. So that we can do the construction for that one.
And, and, um, if I may, uh, Director Alcantara. The, the one at Naval, uh, the one in PD, the Veteran Cemetery as well. You don't have anything to do with that. You're not putting any of your resources in, right?
Okay. You're on mute.
Uh, Mr. Alcantara, you're on, rookie, you're on mute.
Okay, uh, yes, uh, the PD Veteran Cemetery and any, uh, I mean, the East Agania Cemetery. It's not under our jurisdiction anymore.
Okay, that's good to hear. Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, it's good to hear. I'm glad to hear that. Is that?
Yes, yes, and, and, um, as, as both you and I have pointed out, you know, he's, uh, really scoring away. Uh, getting these things taken care of, um, finding their rightful, uh, entity. To take care of it or, uh, adopting. I know that he's been going down his list for adopt a parks and, and all sorts of things like that. Um, the one question, I, I guess the one last question that I have is, I believe you said that there's an MOA. For, uh, some of the parking area that's near or near the cemetery. Uh, there, i- is that correct or am I misremembering, uh, Director?
Uh, yeah, there, there's a parking area on the backside, close to the beach, uh, beachside. Uh, that, uh, is supposed to be utilized as a, a parking area. But, uh, you know, there's, there's, uh, no, nobody, uh. That's going to the cemetery to use that area. So that's actually a part of the, uh, uh, Padre Palomo Park. That's adjacent to the, uh, cemetery. Yeah, so, uh, that, uh. I, I don't know what, uh, what was the, uh, the MOU, uh, on. On the usage of the, uh, of the, uh, you know, the, the, the parking behind that. Uh, it was, uh, way, way before, uh, before I, uh, got in. So, uh, I, uh, I don't know, I think there, what I heard was there's, uh, an agreement. Uh, that, uh, with the previous, uh, I think the director. Uh. One of the directors before that, uh, you know, they, they, the AutoSpot, uh, AutoSpot can utilize those, uh, parking area there. Back, back there since nobody's utilizing it. And, uh, I, I, I don't know if that was an MOA, uh, or, you know, that was, uh, was drafted up. But, uh, I, I still need to, uh, do some re- research on that. Uh, what I heard was the, the, uh, the, uh, usage of that, uh, parking lot. Was kind of like, uh, uh, an agreement with Parks and Rec and AutoSpot. Where if the vehicle of Parks and Rec is, uh, needs to be maintained, then they can bring it in. And, and, and get it, uh, fixed. But that was, uh, that was through, uh. Pre, uh, two administration back, I guess, that, uh, the agreement. So that one, I'm gonna leave that up now to the, the VA, uh, the, the. The VA Director to, to see what, uh, you know, uh, if they can, uh, continue the. The agreement there with, uh, AutoSpot.
Okay, and, and I think, um, they also, since, uh, since they're neighbors, really. Um, I think they've adopted Padre Palomo Park as well. So that they're, they're, um, taking care of their neighbor, if you will.
That's great.
That's very good. Um, similar to, I think, the Superior Court. Did they officially, sorry, this isn't really on topic, but did they officially adopt the Angel Santos Laddy Park? I know they expressed interest.
They expressed interest, but I, I don't have any documentation on that. But, you know, uh, any adoption is very welcome here at Parks and Rec.
Yes, very, very welcome. Yes, and I know, I, um, I know that they were very interested in doing that. And so I hope they continue to pursue that. Um, probably the pandemic and their courts being overwhelmed and other things is, is. Um, you know, something that is capturing a lot of their attention, but, um, I'm sure the interest is still there.
There's, there's a lot of interest. I'm still waiting for, uh, for park adoption to be, uh, signed. And, you know, it, it went through the Attorney General. So there's actually four adoptions that I'm still waiting for. And, uh, you know, i- it's continuing, uh, issue as far as adopting parks. Because that, that will alleviate some of our, you know, maintenance responsibility.
Right, and it's good community service. Um, that's something, you know, I, I do believe in. It, it takes a community. I mean, the government is here to provide services and, and take care of a lot of things. But there is something to be said for community service and community stakeholdership. Um, when, when you've spent some time taking care of a park, you appreciate it deeply. You'll maybe have more activities there and you'll protect it more so if, if somebody's not treating it right. So, um, I think that there's good to be gained and we deeply appreciate any group or individual out there. That has stepped up and adopted some of these parks or even the highways and bus stops. Um, we really appreciate all these civic-minded peoples and groups. We're very fortunate on Guam to have quite a few. That's my kind of appeal to, you know, call for more if, if there are more companies or individuals out there. Okay, if there are no further questions or comments for discussion. Uh, if there are none, the committee will continue to receive any written comments about today's virtual informational briefing hearing. Please address your written testimony to the Committee on Heritage and the Arts, Parks, Guam Products, Hagatnia Revitalization. Self-Determination and Regional Affairs and submit it via email to office.senatorskelly@guamlegislature.org. Or it can be brought to my office located on the second floor of the Guam Congress Building. The committee will adjourn this virtual informational briefing hearing. And I have a very sincere Seduus Mossi to everyone who is here. The minority leader, uh, she's on my, yeah, on my laptop, she's to this side, so I hope it's. It, it makes sense for everybody else. Um, for the minority leader for being here, for the acting director and the dedicated DPR staff. I know many of the staff have been there for many, many years. And that kind of experience and institutional memory is so valuable. So we appreciate their dedication and, and continued service with DPR. So Seduus Mossi, as I said, for everyone's attendance and participation in today's virtual informational briefing hearing. The time is now seven oh four P M. The time is now seven oh four P M. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you very much.
Just Mossi, Sedus Mossi, Rookie, Ariel, thank you, Amanda and Lisa.